To call the February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two Village Board meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Cook?
Here.
Trustee Forster?
Here.
Trustee Markwart?
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Here.
Trustee Takaka?
Here.
Trustee Schenk?
Here.
President Byrne?
Is there a motion to nominate a chairman pro tem for this evening's meeting?
I'd like to nominate trustee Cook to be the chairman pro tem for this meeting.
Seconded.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Takaka?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Okay, motion carries, all right? Then, since the meeting's called to order, would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America.
Are there any citizens wishing to address the board on something other than what's on our agenda in the committee to hold?
Hi, I'm Van Miller, and I'm a founder of a nonprofit in Mundeline called the Mundeline Tool Library. Jonathan Rosales is our secretary. And we want to share a little bit about with you the main reason that we have expanded to use to include all of GLMV in a service area. All the tools that they got were donated by people, primarily Mundeline, people in Libertyville and Vernon Hills also brought stuff over. We have about eight hundred tools there. It works very much like a public library. We have a membership. We ask people to make voluntary donations, twenty dollars or more yearly, just for expenses we have. The village has granted some building free of charge, which is a blessing, and we hope that doesn't change. People come in and they can check out up to seven tools a week. If they're not done, they usually call us and we renew them for them. They sign a liability waiver that they're responsible for what they're, you know, what they've taken and they know how to use it. We have people that have volunteered at Service Tool Advisors. One's there right now, I just left there, who's a mechanical engineer, and he just went through a lady who came in to get stuff to put drapes up and, you know, we gave her an appropriate drill and screw heads and stud finder and stuff like that, and explained it to them, and were happy to talk them through. We hope to later to have, in the spring, we hope to have seminars, stuff like how to prepare your garden beds, how to tune your bikes, tool safety. Very hopeful that sometime we'll get a wood shop open for people, we have a lot of requests for that. Am I missing something huge?
I'd just like to add, so we started plans for the Tool Library. Well, Van started the plans a few years ago.
November nineteenth.
And we actually opened June of last year, and so we've been growing each week, and it's been, we've gotten just such great feedback from Mundeline, and we've had questions from our neighboring towns about opening up to towns such as Vernon Hills. So we took that leap just a couple of weeks ago to do that, and we're basically here just to spread the word and just make that a resource to the residents of Vernon Hills as well.
And where are you located?
We're located in the old Public Works Building in Mundeline, which is four twenty-eight North Chicago, so it's right up the street from the new Town Hall.
Town Hall.
It's on the south side, it's a little difficult to find for people, but I will say when people come in, they're, well, lots of people say, oh, I don't need to go there, I have lots of tools. And then even the tool junkies come and start walking around seeing stuff. I mean, people have donated some just incredible stuff, just checked out a fifteen-hundred-dollar tile saw to somebody tonight, and big belt sanders, and just a lot of things, and auto stuff, more than I would ever think. I don't know tools, so I'm kind of at a loss there. Our motto is caring through sharing, and we've been blessed to have volunteers help man all this stuff, and as we would expand, we're hopeful we'd get more volunteers also, especially, there's people that love tools and building stuff, and when those guys come in, they're helpful. I mean, yes, now we have two people, just unbelievable, they'd talk anybody, walk them through almost any kind of project you could think of, and they really enjoy doing it. So are there any other questions we could help you with?
What are your hours?
Oh, good question. We're open on Saturdays from nine-thirty to three-thirty, and Tuesdays from four to seven. If we start getting a lot more traffic come summer, we might open up another day, but it's a matter of volunteers also. Right now, you know, Jonathan's working and lots of people are, I'm retired and I'm about there eighty percent of the time, and I'm leaving for a month and coming back and then get a new hip, so, you know, little meeting people.
Thank you.
Do you have an online presence, and do you have a listing of what tools you do offer?
We have, it's mundelinetoollibrary.org, one, all small caps, that's our website, where you can sign up on that, you can look at the inventory of tools. We have, this has changed last since we started, we started out by putting tape on it with a number, then we got some little stickers made up, put those on, then we got a little gun to put labels on, and now a young man's volunteer sign comes in at night and he's putting everything on barcode for us. So we're in constant flux. I think we've done well, considering the amount of time we've been open, but, yeah, I think that's gonna, and that, by the way, that we tried to reach out across the community as much as we can, our website, which is really pretty nice to look at, was done by a high school student that we enlisted, and she still maintains it, I saw her yesterday, wrote a letter for her.
Is that a Mundeline High School student?
Yes, yes.
That's awesome.
And tonight, just to see how it goes, tonight I was there from four to seven, well, to four to six-thirty, and I was met at the door by two Carmel students who are doing service hours. We put them to work, and they learn a lot about tools doing it, because the most of them don't know, and the guy that's a mechanical engineer is showing them, and he's telling them some things to do, and explaining why it has to be done that way, and why it's safety, and the safety precautions, and using just, they're reading the air pressure, the clean stuff, and he's explaining how to do it. We had a young couple come in that saw it on Facebook and had just bought a house and doing some repair stuff on there, and they looked around at what we had, and they signed up, became members. Another lady that came in and got materials to take out, and somebody came in to get a snow blower, because we put on Facebook that snows will come on Thursday, and it's hard, and we try to do that, like if there's a big snow forecasted Thursday, we'll probably, one of us will probably say, hey, I'll go over there for two hours Wednesday night, you know, if you want to come get a snow blower. But we're not having snow this year, so. In the case of not, we welcome Vernon Hills to our family and certainly hope you'll take advantage of it. I think, and I should say that we have trustee Tuesdays, if any trustees want to volunteer on a Tuesday. I told the Mundeline people that, and they kind of churled too, but seriously, if you get a chance, and if I'd have been able to do this, I'd have had the meeting at our place and so you could see it, and I think you'd just be, not necessarily wild, but you'd say that's a lot getting done in seven months, so, all right?
Brilliant idea. Did you come up with this yourself, or has it been done in many other communities?
I did, my daughter in Portland, Oregon, and they bought a house, and I said, I'll buy a lawnmower, and she says, don't do that. They have four of them out there. And we drove over there and checked out a battery-powered mower, and came home, mowed it, took it back, and they have nine thousand people in their base, so they have like a twelve-dollar lifetime fee. But they also don't take some of the things we have, I mean, we've got a cherry picker to take an engine out of a car, we've got scaffolding, we've got a twenty-two-inch belt sander if you want to make cabinets, so stuff's hard to load in a car, but we do have quite a few things.
Good.
The other thing I should say, we're having a garage sale in May during amazing Mundeline. We already had one, and you're selling corded drills for ten dollars each and saws, because we have so many of them donated, and just at that, we made twenty-seven hundred dollars, and that just shows you the volume of stuff that came into us, because people are going to battery. But we're gonna have one in May again, and we'll have probably three, four hundred tools that, you know, they're good prices for what you're getting.
It says here you're urgently seeking need of an attorney and an accountant, is that still valid?
Got it. Should've come off the.
Unfortunately, neither, but maybe somebody out there is.
We have a young man that grew up and moved away, and he came back, and he came and met with us at our last board meeting, and says he's happy to do attorney stuff for us. A gentleman from Grayslake that's really wanting us to get a wood shop going, and wants to come in and help, said he's an attorney if we need to call questions, and then, and the accountant, who's retired, he says the, the accountant's basically, we just, it's a very simple operation, I don't want to get, I'm not, I'm a phys ed teacher, I don't want to get down to all of a sudden, and all of a sudden here's tax questions that, you know, you didn't do this right. So that's basic, and I think we've kind of covered ourselves, but we still welcome anybody else with expertise to help us.
And if somebody wants to donate tools, should they just bring them to you, or should they call you in advance and let you know?
During open hours, and I think after this next garage sale, we will be posting something saying, if you have something to donate, send us a photo of it.
Okay.
Because, I mean, I got six boxes of screwdrivers, no one's checking them out.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we're really grateful, the stuff that's coming, it's amazing, but, and we have some antique tools, some of them are so vintage that we, I sold one on eBay for a hundred and thirty-two dollars, you know, an old worm drill, but I didn't know what it was, they told me, but to generate income, but yes, we're taking donations.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the reason most people are here.
Why I'm here.
Yeah. This is a proclamation for Monica Lundine, would you like to come up here, please? Okay. Proclamation for Monica Lundine in appreciation of dedicated service to the village of Vernon Hills. Monica Lundine started with the village of Vernon Hills on September ninth, nineteen ninety-six, and during her tenure with the village, Monica served as administrative assistant in the community development department. Monica was an integral part of serving the residents of Vernon Hills by issuing permits. Monica was also instrumental in developing relationships with the business community through licensing and regulation. Monica was a member of the civilian career development program, helping to professionalize the workforce. Monica supported Vernon Hills seniors, including coordinating transportation services and contributing to the senior outreach initiative during COVID-nineteen pandemic. Monica was involved in the planning of most special events, including the village's fiftieth anniversary celebration, and was a member of the summer celebration committee. Monica organized several charitable events for causes that included the ACS Relay for Life, Alzheimer's Luncheon, and a special community event to raise funds for persons impacted by Hurricane Katrina. Monica was the driving force behind the village's Oktoberfest Fall Fest events, which raised awareness and funds for several charitable organizations, including the Midwest Veterans Closet. After twenty-five years of dedicated service to the village, Monica will retire on Friday, February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Now therefore be proclaimed that Roger L. Byrne, president, and the village board of trustees, do hereby express our sincerest appreciation to Monica Lundine for her years of dedicated service to the residents and businesses of the village of Vernon Hills, and wish her very well in retirement.
Can I take, can I take this down?
Yeah. And I might add, if we were to have put, since I've known you a long time, including before you started working here, if we were to put down the list of every charitable function you ever worked for, I'd be up here talking for the next, you know, way too long. You've done some just amazing and incredible work for so many different organizations and so many different people and so many different events, it's, you know, it's just fantastic.
Thank you, and we have known each other for a long time. I believe you did a, got one of your degrees using my son.
Yes, yes, he was one of my subjects in my master's thesis, yes.
Yes. Well, I have a few words to say. Okay, so the former state rep Kathy Riggs was a clerk here, and she's the one that told me about this position, and thanks Kathy, she sent a text today saying, congratulations. And Larry Lashin, who's sitting back here in the blue, was our first police chief and second village manager, and he hired me. So Larry, thank you for coming. I have had the pleasure of knowing a lot of people. Mayor extraordinaire Roger Byrne, and sixteen outstanding trustees in the years that I have been here. Some of you I've known longer. Thank you all for everything, your support and your friendship. Our village is an amazing place to live and raise children in Vernon Hills because of Roger Byrne and all of you. I've lived here for forty-three years, it's a long time, and Bob says we're not moving. So it has been a pleasure to work here. I have been blessed to work with some outstanding people in the, as in staff here, and that would include five village managers, six assistant village managers, four clerks, four building commissioners, two public works directors, three police chiefs, nine-plus deputy chiefs, several public works employees, and the police officers. Both of those departments hold a special place in my heart. I have two former police officers back there, that's why I'm saying that. The building department, community development, has the best staff. This job is not easy, but it is fun, and the staff in this department are truly amazing people. An example is Jennifer, who came a couple of years ago and will go far in the village. She has made an impact on this village that cannot be surpassed by anybody. Building Commissioner and Community Development Director Mike, my boss. What can I say about him? Our first encounter was that he had to dress up for Halloween, and the theme was the Wizard of Oz. We told him he had to dress as the wizard. Do you remember that? He's got such a great sense of humor, and he is really kind. This department is in great hands because of you and the staff. I've made some good friends with most of the businesses in the village, as I was given the greatest opportunity to help businesses in the village by handling their licensing. It was truly an honor and a blessing that I have made friends with these people for life. Thank you for all of those that came tonight, thanks Mary. Now our current village manager, Kevin. Kevin is kind, he's a great listener, and he's an excellent leader. And I'm sorry I didn't have time, more time, to work together, but I feel blessed at the time we have had. I felt exactly the same as you did when you said to me, you were like talking to a longtime friend. I feel the same. I think my greatest accomplishments, and Tom said some of them, I do really like charity work. I don't know why, I think it's because my mom said, you have to give back more than you've received, so I do really try to do that. I did start an organization for building clerks when I started here, and I have to tell you that there's over forty-some members from different villages and cities, and they're still meeting after all this time, and they meet every other month, which has helped other villages with their departments, because we'll be able to share information. I was on American Cancer Society Lake County Board and Relay for Life, Alzheimer's, I, you know, they're very close to my heart, we've had, who haven't you come in contact with that has had cancer, or is an Alzheimer's dementia person? So those things are very special to me. I also loved the polar plunge, I did that several times, freezing my ride-off, along with all of your men and women, and that was fun. And then Shop With The Cops, loved that. I made over seven hundred and fifty masks, as Tom is wearing one of them. Because there wasn't anything I could do to help people at the beginning of this COVID, and that was the only thing I could do to help. I hope when people think of me that they remember that I am not perfect, but that I was kind to them, and it was all about giving back. So on behalf of my husband and my family, thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Kevin, could one of you? Anybody else? Yeah. Somebody have? Does anybody, anybody else have anything they'd like to say, or maybe even an audience member who'd like to?
I'm Mary Suckerman. And I know a lot of you, I've been with.
Your name is again?
Mary Suckerman. Tom used to do volleyball for my, both of my boys, Josh and Jake. I've been a resident of Mundeline for thirty-five years, working with Fifth Third Bank, which was formerly Old Kent, for forty-five years, and in my visits here in Vernon Hills, which we used to be at the corner of sixty Milwaukee, and then we moved up and left Vernon Hills for about five years, across the streets in Libertyville, and then we merged with MB Financial, which brought us back, and I'm so glad to be back, I still worked with Vernon Hills even when I was in Libertyville, but Monica has been a friend and a business associate with me for, I don't know if you realize this, for twenty years. We met, she's done incredible things for me personally, as well as a business partner. One of the things that's very near and dear to my heart is back, I want to say now, it's been ten years, maybe fifteen, Tilted Kilt, when that was here, she did a fundraiser for me for a sixty-mile walk in Colorado, and billed a phenomenal contribution, we raised, I think it was over eight thousand dollars that evening, so thank you from the bottom of my heart. That's just one of many things that she's done for me on the personal side, she's helped me with the marriage of both my boys, and helping me do many things for them in preparation for showers, for invitations, I mean, she's just been an incredible individual to work with and to have as a friend, but mostly Monica, I can't get any deeper, the partnership and the friendship that we've had over the years, and I know we'll still be together because at this point I'm going to be retiring also at the end of the year of forty-five, but I'm not leaving Mundeline, at least not for the time being, both my boys are in Colorado right now, but we have, probably, will probably be here for at least another two or three years, but in that time I'm sure that Monica and I will still continue to stay in touch as we always have been. So thank you, Monica, for everything that you've done for us on the business side, she's always been there to support us and help us, get our name out here, and all of the special events that Vernon Hills has had over the years, and I've been, as Fifth Third, a really great sponsor as well, back to the village and to the Park District, as well as to the library and many other institutions throughout the time, but thank you for all your dedication, your friendship, and your business partnership.
Thank you. That's the other thing we didn't mention, the creativity, and all your crafts and stuff that you put together for people's parties, people's weddings, you know, not just these masks, but just all of the incredible stuff that you've done for people and made for people is, you know, one of the sides we forgot.
Craig would like to say something.
What's that?
Craig.
Craig, did you?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, this is trustee Takaka, unfortunately I've been in Phoenix in eighty-degree weather the last five days, I'm sorry. Monica, but I'll see you on Friday, I'm coming home tomorrow, but what I, I just want to say, I've known Monica five years since being a trustee here, and it's been an honor and a pleasure working with you, number one. My daughter did an internship here, you welcomed her, you made her feel comfortable, I know you guys, you know, went out to lunch and you made her feel very welcome here in the village, but the thing is, when I had a charitable situation, Sue's pantry, as you know, first person I thought of was going to Monica, and in a very short period of time, all she did was make some connections for me that, you know, has, you know, made, you know, our help of Sue's pantry a great success. So Monica, congratulations on your retirement, I'll see you Friday, and we're really gonna miss you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Craig.
Okay, yeah, Mike?
Well, Monica, twenty-five years goes by pretty fast, with me it was fifteen years, and, you know, thank you for everything you've done, not only to, not only for our department but, and the organization, but really for the entire community as a whole. You know, you've done so many wonderful things for Vernon Hills, but I think hearing all the comments, and I think the board members knowing you know that your biggest contributions really are not only the special events that you've coordinated and raised, but all the contributions to the charitable organizations that those supported, so thank you for everything you've done, and we'll miss you very much, and we wish you and Bob all the best in the next phase of your life.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, if not, you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting if you don't want to, so we'll give you an opportunity to go ahead and leave, then. I did. Yeah, I still need to.
Do you sign already? Did you sign that book?
No, I still have to.
He still needs to, later. Later.
Yeah, I'll get him.
Probably move ahead. What's that?
We have Roger. Okay. Next item, still under the village president's report, I just wanted to take a moment to update the community on Mayor Byrne. Unfortunately, the mayor's unable to be with us this evening, he is currently recovering from some recent health issues, and we just wanted to make everybody aware that our thoughts and prayers, our thoughts and prayers in that are with the mayor and his family, and we wish him a very speedy recovery, we'd like to have him back soon, so our best wishes to him. Next item is Village Manager Fiscal Year 2022-23 Budget Process.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to update everybody real quickly here. Staff is in the process right now of finalizing the documents for our proposed fiscal year 22-23 budget. We're hoping to have those materials to you and to the staff by the end of this week. We will be presenting the proposed budget at the two upcoming board meetings on March 1st and March 15th at the Committee of the Whole. For transparency, we will be placing a copy of the proposed budget on the Village website. In addition, we'll be having a public hearing for the proposed budget at the first meeting in April, with the hopeful date of the second meeting in April to adopt the final budget. So, look for that soon. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on staff have a speaking part tonight? I don't see any, no? Okay. Then, next item is omnibus vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through E? Motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
There are motions, second. Any comments, questions concerning these items? Hearing none, roll call, please.
President Byrne. Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
President Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. We have no unfinished additional business, correct? Anything under new business and communication that anybody wants to share?
I'd like to share one. One of our residents who's been before us in the past as a, as our representative for the girls, for the pageant, is currently battling brain tumor and just had her second surgery, and that's Peyton Newman. So, I just thought we should all wish her well on behalf of the community, so.
Yeah, wish her a speedy recovery.
Yes.
Anything else? Okay. So, are we, we're looking for adjournment, correct? Okay. And do we need the motion on closed session now, or at the end of?
At the end of Committee of the Whole.
End of Committee of the Whole? Okay. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn the board meeting?
So may.
Second? Motion second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. We are adjourned. Mr. Manager?
And we'll need another motion going into Committee of the Whole to nominate a chairman pro tem.
I'd like to nominate trustee Cook to be the president pro tem or chairman pro tem for the Committee of the Whole meeting.
Aye, second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Okay. Then, with the Committee of the Whole called to order, first item of business is approval of the Committee of the Whole minutes from February 1st, 2022. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion a second. Any comments, questions, corrections? Hearing none, roll call, please.
President Byrne. Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
President Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is the Guidepost Montessori School Concept Presentation for a Special Use Permit Site Landscape and Architectural Appeal for a new daycare facility located at 2 East Philip Road.
Heather, can I take my mask down?
Sure. Whichever you're most comfortable with.
Unless you want me slurring.
No. No, whatever you're most comfortable with.
No, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, trustees. Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. I'm Mitch Golds, owner of GW Properties. I'm the owner of the property at the corner of Phillips and Deer Path. We've owned this since 2017. It was a former PNC bank, and happy to be here before you guys tonight to present our plan to redevelop the site. Is this the latest one? Okay. So, just go through a very quick presentation and happy to answer any questions, so. This? Okay. So, our plans is, we'll get into is to redevelop the site, which is currently vacant. It was a former PNC bank, which we demoed, demolished a few years ago. Had some prior plans at hand, but here we are before you to propose an 11,000-square-foot Guidepost Montessori School. It's an international company with a great root in Chicagoland area. We have one under construction right now in the Village of Oakbrook, and looking to be the newest member in Vernon Hills. Images of the inside here. They have 90 locations around the country with others across the world. Just some information on the demographics. There's approximately 5,500 children under the age of nine that are available, possible customers with only about 124 seats available, so we're less than 2% of the demographic in the area. Here's some images of some other facilities in the Chicagoland area. Oh, yeah, sorry. This one? Okay. This is a rendering of the site at hand, facing north, sorry, facing southeast from the intersection. This would be a new construction building with a tremendous amount of landscaping, sorry, masonry, masonry building on all four sides, landscaping would be screening the outdoor play area, parking on site. We've been making no changes to access along the streets. There's a site plan. We have adequate parking to meet all local code setbacks, to meet local code. The building would be on the top left in the yellow with the play area on the east portion of the building, the heavy proposed landscaping along Route 60, as well as along Deer Path. If you need me to dim the lights, let me know. I'm assuming you guys have a little bit better visibility on your screens. Here's a floor plan and some images of some nearby facilities that they have in the Chicagoland area. These are the elevations. They'll be all masonry with a lot of good detail, a lot of good natural light. Here's a rendering of the site again, more zoomed in. Here's a rendering of the site facing the parking lot. Here's a rendering of the site from the interior side facing the building. So, rendering along Route 60, showing all the new landscaping. And that is it. So, in total, and as outlined in the report, we are not seeking, we are seeking a special use for this, for the use. We will comply with all building codes, setback codes, and other municipal codes to do this. We're excited to be here. We've developed in Vernon Hills before, and this would be a nice addition to the market, and that would be a really nice improvement to the aesthetics of this corner. So, happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Anybody on the board have a question?
I...
Go ahead.
Just a question in regards that, basically, across the street, there's the same. Basically, across the street, you have Children's Care, the YMCA, which, Park District, which is just down from you, also Children's Care. Where does this step into position with the other two areas? Cost, I know...
I would tell you that, first of all, you know, Montessori School is a more specialized type of learning that, you know, I'm not saying it's better or worse, certain people have more inclination to want to go there. From a price point, this is on the very high end of the market, you know, approximately 20% to 25% higher than many other businesses that offer childcare products. So, you know, as indicated in the brief presentation, you know, there's a tremendous amount of children from age, you know, zero to nine, you know, approximately 5,500 students in that range that would be going to preschool with about only 124 seats available in the school. So, it's a very small percentage. So, this user, as well as many others that we've talked to about this site and others in the area, have noted that there's a tremendous amount of demand for different types of product in this sector. But from a price point standpoint, this would be on the very high end, on the high end of the spectrum.
Currently, you said, it looked like it's 16 in Illinois?
Uh, I think it's 16. We have, there's about nine others that are in Illinois under various stages of construction.
Great. So, how many are currently, so there's 16 operating right now?
Yeah, in Illinois operating. We have actually two in our construction. Yes.
So, if you will, a few questions.
Yeah.
Just a little louder, a second. What are your capacity, what is the capacity rate? Like, what's your vacancy rate on those based on your enrollment, your maximum enrollment in this building?
I guess the vacancy or the occupancy, I would say, is very high, and in many cases, they have waiting lists to get into the schools. So, part of their inclination to want to be here is the success that they see elsewhere in the Chicagoland community. They built a very nice brand that's seen across the marketplace. But there is, they're not building these facilities and seeing them sit vacant. I mean, one of the advantages of coming in is to see the demographics, see what's filled, see what opportunities exist, and we've seen a lot of other, you know, competitor uses see the same value, and they're being underserved.
And you said, you mentioned the opportunities that exist, the demographics. What about Vernon, what is it about Vernon Hills that attracted to put a Montessori school at the current location that's proposed? And what do you see are the needs that you think you're going to maintain that high occupancy rate here in Vernon Hills?
So, one of the strengths of Vernon Hills is, aside from being a very flourishing municipality, is a tremendous amount of growth, tremendous amount of family growth, a tremendous amount of daytime population. Some of the students that go here may not live in Vernon, families may not live in Vernon Hills, but the parents may work nearby one of the various office buildings. So, just seeing where Vernon Hills is going as a municipality and the amount of growth that they see going forward, and the amount of underserved youth that are looking for products such as this, in this type of setting, is what they've seen and others have seen as well. So, at the end of the day, you know, there's a lot of children, and not one type of learning is right for everybody, and they have seen that many, many people choose this type of learning over other, you know, commonly practiced methods. And at the end of the day, they're only seek, they only have 124 seats, so this is not, it's not a high school, it's not going to accommodate everybody, but there's enough need and demand in the market to fill this facility.
And this is determined on an overall look of the general characteristics of this village, or specifically this village?
Well, I think, look, I don't, I'm not going to say that Vernon Hills is unique in the sense that this won't work elsewhere. I think, you know, children have the aptitude and need to learn, and this type of learning is something that's well-versed across the country and world. So, the density and the amount of people in Vernon Hills and in the three-to-five-mile radius, which is their kind of core customer, there's more than enough people in this vicinity that would be possible customers here, but not nearly all of them can be accommodated with any one facility.
And currently, I have one more question. What percentage, or what number of your seats, I think you said 124?
Yeah.
What number of those seats are allocated for low-income students that can't afford to pay the tuition?
You know, I can't speak to the, any sort of low income. I know they have financing options, but I mean, this is in the range of childcare. This is definitely on the higher end of the spectrum.
So, there's no type of, like, a scholarship or subsidy?
I can't speak to whether the scholarship or financial aid. I just know that it's, you know, within the published rates, it's on the higher end of the spectrum. I do believe they offer some sort of financial assistance for...
So, financial assistance versus amortizing over the years are actually a subsidy that they don't have to pay back?
I'd have, I don't have the exact answer to that, actually, that question.
Do our other, do our other schools have that, preschools? Do we know?
I don't know. I, that question obviously has never come up, but I'm happy to look into that for you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Good question.
Any other?
Can we take another look at the building aesthetic?
Yeah. You want to? I'll start at the first rendering.
That one right there.
So, it's a little bit easier to see on probably a smaller screen, or it's a little bit darker, but the building would be...
I'm just a little surprised at sort of the colors and the overall layout. It doesn't look, look so much like a childcare facility to me from the outside.
It's a nice looking, it's all masonry, a lot of windows, all the classrooms have a lot of natural light. It's hard to see with all the light here, but it's, you know, it's a bunch of grayish tones. I mean, there's buildings across the country with various tones, but if there's a specific color palette that we were looking for...
I mean, when you compared it to the other buildings, if you can go back a few slides, look at the other...
This?
Montessori's, no, back a couple more even. I think we're like across Chicagoland. That one, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, a couple of these buildings are in larger office buildings. Some of them are rehabbing existing buildings. The one that's under construction that we're doing in Oakbrook on the former Macy's site is new construction, has a very similar aesthetic. The one in Chicago was a former Montessori, or a former school. The one in Schaumburg, I believe, was another school. So, it really is case by case, and we adhere to all design standards and municipal regulations. But I think it's a beautiful-looking building, and definitely give a lot of character to the site.
This is not exactly the use I had kind of hoped for on this location, just because of the location is the concern. I think it's a nice-looking building. Again, not...
I'm just curious, trustee, what you...
It's a nice-looking building.
No, I'm just curious, I mean, because this is our fourth time around to get a plan, or what was the...
We've talked about, you know, potentially this being more of a retail location, you know?
Right. And retail's not, I mean, actually, under the current zoning, it's a very complicated zoning. We've, just to be clear, I mean, I own GW Property, we're probably one of the most active retail developers in the entire Chicagoland area, so I can assure you, this being the fifth year of my ownership, that no rock has gone unturned, and we've had the largest real estate company in the world, who also did all the leasing for Melody Farm and half of Vernon Hills. So, we're here before you with a plan that fits the character of the site and fits. We had restaurants, we had all sorts of things that for one reason or another were not viable. So...
I understand.
So, I just would point that out.
Yeah.
So...
What's just east of there, the red?
East is the Mandarin restaurant, and a bunch of office, a mix of office uses primarily around here with some retail clustered in.
Is that the playground area between the building and the restaurant?
Yes. Yeah, the playground's to the east of the building, fully fenced in.
What's the approximate setback? I was having trouble reading the map. The design was kind of small from the...
So, the setback along the street is along town line is 60, 60, 6-0, and then along Deer Path, I believe, is 40. So, we're adhering to all the setbacks. We're keeping a portion of the parking lot as existing, will not be encroaching anything closer than what was before.
What's your, your hours for classes?
I think the typical hours are 7:00 to, 7:00 AM to 5:00 or 6:00 PM.
Is it all usually mostly parent drop-off, or you have buses?
Yeah, no, no buses. It's drop-off.
Private buses off. So, you do realize that down Phillips Road going west is the access for the kindergarten center, which is all the kindergartens in the entire school district?
Right.
And that's the parent drop-off access route through the Victory Center?
Right.
I'm, I'm not sure on their hours, but you're probably pretty close. How do you tend, you know, I've seen they, them stack up, you know, and they, I don't know how many...
On Deer Path?
No, they come down Phillips, and then they stack up in the parking Sullivan Center, but they actually exit. There's just a lot of traffic during those school drop-off hours. What is your mitigation strategy? Where will they stack? Do you know, like an overlay?
So, the difference here versus many schools, this is a drop-off, people are dropping them and walking them in, so the people are typically parked, and this is not getting a queuing type of setup. So, what we did here is we utilized, sorry, where's the site plan? So, it's a little bit hard to see on here, the access points, as exists today, there's two full access points. What we've done is kept the access furthest away from the intersection to the east on Phillips, with there being an exit right turn only, closer to the intersection, fearing that most vehicles are going to look to get back out onto Deer Path. So, you're not going to get the type of stacking where, you know, there's going to be 35 cars waiting, I mean, not to mention there's limited capacity to begin with, but those who are coming into the building will park, walk in, and then leave safely.
Would that be potentially a planning and zoning considerate, look at that, the way the parking and the ingress egress?
Yeah.
That would look, yeah.
But you're currently asking, only asking for one full?
Yeah, currently, there's two full access points. In previous development plans, it was suggested to limit the western access, which we've limited to an exit-only. You know, we could have survived without that access point, but it was deemed more acceptable by our traffic engineer, and I believe as well as the village engineer, to have that outlet for a right turn only, so that not everybody's backing up. And that further adds to, further diminishes any sort of stacking issue at the main entrance because cars can leave two places, but only enter on one.
And the, is the drop-off based on the classes, different times? Or is everyone drop-off...
Yeah, different times with different, different.
Because I'm counting like, I don't know, maybe sixty-five spots here, plus, and put staff in there too, I'm not sure, and a hundred and twenty-four seats, just kind of, I'm doing the math, I foresee a stack out on.
There won't be stacking, and, and the parking that we have meets code, it is considerably more parking than what would typically be seen.
I'm just going to base, because it's a typical drop-off situation, right, in and out.
Yeah, I mean, they, many of the ones we have have five to eight spaces for drop-off, I mean, this parking, this parking can be drastically reduced, and it would survive for them. We do meet the parking requirements by the village, which is based on a per square, based on square footage, but, you know, you're not getting any students here driving and parking. So, the drop-offs do vary at hours, because it is such an early age range, the, the drop-off range is not, there's not a start time, so to speak, where everyone's there at eight, eight o'clock and the bell rings, so kids are coming from, you're looking at a hundred and twenty-four capacity with drop-off raging over, call it, you know, two hours. So, if you, you think about a hundred and twenty students over two hours, that's, it's not going to ever get to the point where you have ten, fifteen people waiting in line. So, they operate, like I said, many locations around the country, there's nothing unique about that aspect to it, but, uh, they know what works and what doesn't, and at the end of the day, this is a, a service to the community to benefit the community, so if they're offering something that becomes a problem, then it ultimately kind of hurts themselves. So, um, I can assure that that won't happen.
Any other comments or questions from the board or staff? Or is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address this? I just wanted to maybe, Jeffrey, do you, anybody? Okay, do, um, well, we're not really looking for a motion tonight, correct? We're just looking for.
No, this is concept review, you don't need a motion, but you should pull the board on whether or not the concept is something that's acceptable.
Yeah, and then, and then directing it to technical review, if you think it's appropriate.
Okay, um, well, we'll start at this end, trustee Schenk.
Can I ask a question about?
Sure.
The ruling on this, so if, if the design of the building, not necessarily the purpose of the, of the, what we're using the property, they'd be using the property for, but if I don't like the design of the building, is, is that something that I note on a no vote, or is that something?
Yeah, I, I would say so, if you don't, the, the design would be included in your opinion of the concept. Uh, this, I want to remind everybody, uh, the current request is for a non-binding concept approval, feedback by the COW can be used by the development team in developing formal plans. Tonight's decision is not a formal approval or denial of this zoning application, it is a chance for this applicant to get feedback from the, from the COW. Additionally, the decision tonight will not prevent the village board from changing its position in the future or adding conditions in the future, but if there's something about what you've seen, I would say that you don't like or favor, that should go into your decision whether or not to give the feedback of approval of the concept versus disapproval.
Would it be okay if you can go back to the design of the exterior of the building?
No problem, I'm happy to get feedback, I.
If I could add on to what village attorney Ferillo said, is, uh, trustee Schenk, yeah, now's the time to offer comments on the site, the architecture, anything you see, that's helpful, that you think is a question, uh, it's helpful for the petitioner going forward, it's also helpful for the staff to hear the board's comments and understand what you're, what you like and what you don't like as we go into the technical review process. So, so please offer those opinions.
Is there a particular?
So, particularly, it, it definitely has that warehouse feel to it, I mean, I know you're going to lighten up with the, uh, with the playground, um, you know, any business that comes into the village, you want to make sure you're successful, and you want to make, you want, we want to make sure you're successful, and, and it just seems like a very, uh.
Sterile.
Sterile, thank you, I just couldn't, I was thinking of the word, but it started with an S T, but a very sterile-looking environment for children, um, you know, we're a very family-oriented community, um, so I would like to see a better-looking design. I'm not an architect, but I know that it seems very bland, and I would be also concerned about, I know you're talking about the stacking on Phillips Road, with one entrance, I can't, I could potentially foresee on bad weather days that potentially stacking out on Phillips Road, and I believe it's only two lanes passing there. If you go back to the, um, um, the site plan, so, I just, you know, I'm just, I'd be curious to take a look at that, the planning and zoning, we'll probably take a look at that.
We'll ultimately have a traffic report to, to suggest how it operates, I mean, I, I'm duly noted and.
Yeah, did you do a tra, did you do a traffic study on this location?
We did have a traffic study, we provided that to the village, and the village has reviewed.
So, we have it, okay.
I mean, I will just point out to.
We have what we need, trustee Schenk, yeah, so we'll take a good, hard look at that as part of technical review.
But duly noted, thank you very much.
How, how does this compare in size to the prior proposal?
It's, uh, the prior building that, uh, the Goddard School, who we were selling the property to, um, who had received positive recommendations, their building was sixteen thousand square feet, one-six, this building's eleven, so it's approximately a fifty percent reduction in size.
And the difference is mostly in the, in the playground?
You know, I, I don't know that the playground actually has gotten any smaller, the building size has gotten smaller, um, where, well, that building was grown by almost fifty percent, probably in every direction, so their, their playground had been in a similar area, uh, this playground, I believe, is about six thousand, uh, six to seven thousand square feet.
Was it extending into the setback, extending into the parking lot, extending, I mean, it wasn't a two-story building.
No, it was a single-story building, I think.
The previous one?
Yeah, with Goddard.
With Goddard.
It was, it was in pretty much the same location, you know, it was a single-story building, playground was in the, uh, the same location.
The playground must have been smaller than.
I, I think the playground was smaller, I believe they were also seeking a variation for something, right, Mike?
There was a variation for fencing, as I remember for the past one.
Okay.
And there may or may not have been one for a side yard setback, I just don't recall.
Yeah, so we're.
I think there was some problem with setback, yeah.
Yeah, so we're, we adhere, we're adhering to the setbacks in all directions, that this is a larger playground than what many other operators would live with, um, but since we have the space, the site's, the site's probably thirty percent larger than what we really need, but we're able to adhere to the parking requirement, setback requirement, and, and provide adequate landscaping and, uh, more space outside than, than what's required, so.
So, in continuing, um, trustee Schenk, you're?
Um, I'd give him my recommend, my opinion, I think it's pretty.
Trustee Mark?
Again, the building is, uh, in general plain, but, uh, other than that, in fact, my concern has, is really the, uh, the exiting that's close to the light, uh, not a problem as an aspect. And I believe on the original, wasn't the road or the turnout pushed more towards the east?
Uh, I'm going to say original from what reference?
For the Goddard one?
For the Goddard.
Uh, I don't, you know, that, we're, we put the access points kind of as far away from one another as possible, they're in, you know, that the one on the west is, is existing, I'm sorry, the one on the east is existing. You know, I will state for the record, you know, we and our, our tenant is not opposed to closing the one on the, the west, but the traffic study, uh, and I believe the village engineer had recommended having that extra access point, um, it's, it's an exit-only.
It's great that it's an exit-only, that's the thing, I'm just, what I'm looking at is that.
Yeah, not only an exit-only, it's a right-out only.
It's a, it's a right-out, and, uh, I'm not complaining about it, I'm just looking at the point of, when people trying to get out, the people that are coming down Phillips Road, they'll let you in.
Well, I think.
It's right on that, it's close to that light, that's, I'm just looking.
And I think the, I think just generally acts, you know, access to somewhat of a self-regulated avenue, I mean, if, if it's backed up, then more people are going to go to the eastern access point where they can get out without having to wait for a stopgap. So, you know, it's, it's helpful to have that second access point, it's not required, but in the event there isn't a backup, it provides for less circulation within the site and just to drop, come, come into the site, leave, but if it's backed up, then more people than not would say, you know, I'll just go to where I can get out, um, but, uh.
I have, I have no problem with it, I'm just looking at that.
No, it's, it's a good question, and we've evaluated, I think it's, it, we have the space, um, it's not a cost thing, we think it's a benefit, it's not requirement, but, uh, um, like I said, it just provides a second outlet. Some of the earlier versions of some plans, we had those both as full, but that would present some challenges with cars trying to turn left into the site to back up, but, you know, this is, this is hundreds of feet away from the intersection, and, um, you're going to get habitual drivers coming in to know the best times and, and how to get in and out, so.
Trustee Oppenheimer?
Yeah, so I misspoke, it wasn't Goddard, it was Gardner, that, that was the prior, that was my fault, prior applicant, but, uh,
Yeah.
I, I would say that, that I was much more excited about the aesthetic of that building than this one, this really does look like it's, looks like a, even a non-exciting furniture store, just a.
I'm happy to look at that architecture, if that architecture, commissioner Schenk, have you, were you trustee at the time of the former, okay, I mean, happy, commissioner Oppenheimer, if that's something, we can clearly look at that, that went through a very rigorous review and.
It's right at the entrance to, to a neighborhood, Deer Path, so it'd be nice to, to make it look at.
As much as I like to tell the architect to think outside the box, if there's something that has been seen, that has been well-received, I'm happy to give that feedback as inspiration for some of my design changes, that's not a problem.
That's all I have. Trustee Forrest?
I'm, I'm in agreement with everybody, that my first initial, um, impression of it was that it was a, like a medical, like a quest diagnostics is what it, it looked like to me. And it's across from a dental place there too, so it just, it, it feels very medical to me from the outside, so.
We can make some changes to that, that's.
I'm just agreeing with everybody and, and.
It's good feedback, and we'll definitely, uh, these are tangible things to, to go back and, and modify before and during technical review, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see school or childcare in, in the outside of it.
We'll freshen it up.
Is that?
Did you speak, trustee?
Well, I, I've already said, you know, I'm not real sparky about the particular use in that, and, and, and when I said I liked the building, it's the same problem, it's, it would be a nice, a really nice building if this was a, like you said, a medical facility or something like that, yeah, um, but, uh.
So, we, it sounds like we have really five no's on concept approval so far, and there's trustee Takioka, am I right?
Yeah, yeah, trustee, yeah, trustee Takioka, a couple, couple things, I, I believe there's only one Montessori in Vernon Hills, Vernon Hills Montessori Academy, is that correct?
There's one in, uh, in, in the synagogue on Hawthorne Parkway, or.
Right, okay, so, to me.
Small rooms, it's a smaller facility.
A different concept, it, it's, it's different, I think the draws, Libertyville, Lake Forest, Lincolnshire, Green Oaks, um, the building, I guess you could make it less industrial-looking, but, um, as far as traffic flow, Tom, you mentioned retail, that would, if you had a busy retail there, remember, I believe Canes wanted to go there once upon a time, and that would definitely have it work. If you had a busy retail spot here, the traffic flow would definitely be emphasized significantly as well, wouldn't you think, versus morning, afternoon, you know, sporadic traffic? So, I agree that it'd be great to have retail, but it certainly can't be fast food, and if it's a busy retail, well, then we got traffic problems, that's just my take on it. I, I don't feel that it really competes with existing, you know, because of, you know, the demographic and the type of schooling, it is different, so, you know, if it was the standard, you know, daycare type of thing, yeah, we weren't really in favor of that, so, that's my perspective.
Thank you, and I think, you know, cuts both, traffic cuts both ways, I mean, I, being a retail developer, I can tell you ten things that I would like to put here, I could tell you that we've looked into those, and the things that we'd want to see, or somebody would want to see, present a whole slew of challenges, aside from it not being zoned properly for restaurant or retail, the amount of traffic and the intensity of the traffic is considerably greater than this. So, we want to find a use that, A, someone that wanted to be here and make the investment and, and commitment here, and B, something that we think would do well, and see something that actually, we think will fit and not present any challenges to the, the community as a whole, so.
Well, and that'll be looked into and.
Right, and then that's, and we want to go through that process, and if I, you know, we've been through this before, and as the commissioner, trustee just indicated, and we, we had a, a raise in Canes, ready to go, got through this stage, and had got denied elsewhere in the process, but, you know, we don't think that would be a problem here, but, I mean, it definitely would be more traffic in, in and out, so, um, so we're, we're excited to take the next step, and we'll take this feedback to heart and come back with, um, through the process with, uh, appropriate changes to the design and, and backup evidence on some of the things that were raised, and look to go from there, so.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll be interested to see what the, the planning and zoning commission says, so.
Chief Kreese, your, your headquarters are right around the corner over there, what's the traffic flow like in the mornings and the afternoons over there now with the school on Phillips and Deer Path?
Yeah, we, we will see some stacking, um, for the existing, uh, preschool that's on Deer Path, so just west of the police building.
Who is it, Christ Lutheran?
I'm sorry?
No.
No, the Kinder.
Yeah, the Kinder Care.
Kinder Care.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see some stacking on Deer Path for that, uh, but I couldn't speak to the, um, size of the parking lot compared to, I, I think what this applicant is talking about is a design where people park and come in, and I think most of that stacking, uh, if I'm going from my observation, it's a drive-through drop-off, where, um, the cars are only cycling through the parking lot, and that's what's probably contributing the backup, uh, based on my observation.
No, that, that, that's correct, and I think that's one of the unique elements here, I mean, you, it's not, I don't think it's physically possible to have stacked backup, because, I mean, you're, you're looking at the entrance being as far away from the access point as possible, people are parking, so, you know, if this was a, everybody just throws their kids out of the car, I, you could see that there'd be some sort of stacking.
And the Kinder Care doesn't have a very.
I mean, and as ideal as that is, many times it's a parent rushing in the morning, but, uh, you know, that won't happen here, and the traffic study that was commissioned, uh, will, will, will suggest, you know, we'll, we'll go through all that stuff, so we'll, we welcome that opportunity, and I appreciate it.
This is a bit larger parking lot than the one that Kinder Care has, right? A significant number?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is larger, and again, we'll, you know, we, we've had other daycare facilities through here and such, I haven't seen a model where stacking is actually a concern, because in every case, it's a situation where, first of all, there's a range of time when you drop your kids off, in this case, I heard a two-hour range, and then it's a situation where the parents park their car, they get out, and they walk their children in, and they pick them up the same way, they park, they go in, they get their children, and take them to the car. So, stacking isn't necessarily the, uh, the issue, is what we found when we review, uh, traffic studies, and, uh, but we'll, and we've heard the board, and, uh, we have a traffic study, we will take a critical look at it as part of, uh, technical review to assure that, uh, that we don't have a stacking concern. Uh, I can also speak to the right-out on, on Phillips Road, I, I can, and I can, won't get into detail, because I'll let Dave Brown do that, but I can say that the right-out only is what, is what he requested, uh, from the developer. Right now, it's full access, he wanted it reduced to right-out only, and felt that was appropriate for that location, that, that's all I have.
In, in regards to stacking, drop-off is usually not the issue, it's the pickup, because a lot of parents like to say it's a three o'clock pickup, they're not coming at three, they're coming at two-thirty to get their kid right out, you know how, I mean.
Well, and the difference is that there's still a range of hours, I mean, this isn't a, this isn't like it's an elementary school where the bell rings and everyone's picking, I mean, you're getting people that are picking up at three to six, so.
My, my point is, my point is, just driving up and down Aspen Drive, the stacking, it occurs on the pickup, because, hey, want to get the kid first, want to get out of there, we got to go wherever, I know they're young kids, it's a different story, but they might have to go pick up their brother, whatever, so it's the pickup that I'd be, that I'd look at.
Understood, and the traffic study will, will show that, I, I think it, it, there's a lot of empirical evidence to, to give facts to, to make some educated.
Well, I'll say, uh, trustee Schenk, staff hears you, and we'll take a close look at that. Staff hears your comments, and, and we'll, we'll take a very close look at that in the PM to make sure we don't have that issue, and if we do, we'll make it, we'll make the petitioner solve it.
I would imagine that compared to, to the ones in Wicker Park, we've got a, got to be a ton more space here than.
I mean, look, the site's bigger than it needs to be, which is why we're not seeking any variance for parking setbacks, I mean, um, you know, the ones in the city, you'd kind of deal with a whole different dynamic of urban driving, and people walking, and biking, and strollers, there's a whole slew of ways people get picked up on top of congested traffic at busy intersections. So, um, I think the point is, this is, you know, it's a well-located corner, we want to find something that's compatible for the site, um, and, uh, we'll make sure that everything's designed to not exacerbate any problems that exist. So, I can't promise that this development will make things better in the community, um, from a traffic standpoint, but the, the goal is to not make them, them worse, and, uh, we would, we'll do our, our best here, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you've made your, yeah, you already made your.
I've, I've covered the, the meaning of tonight's proceedings, thank you.
We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, that's, um, only other item on committee, correct? So, what we're looking for is a motion to adjourn and go to closed session for, uh, approval of minutes, litigation.